Call the meeting to order, please, and ask that you all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Tamer, call the roll, please.
Veremus. Stoyter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Palomsky.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Nudera.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Hanquist.
Here.
Bastido.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, zero absent. We have a quorum. Item three on the agenda, 3.1, receipt of written communications from the public. Is there anyone in the public that has a written communication to deliver to the council? There being none, move on to item four, 4.1, public forum. Clerk Tamer, has anyone signed in for public forum?
There's nobody that's signed in, mayor.
All right. I would ask if there's anyone in the audience, but I see no one. We'll move on to number five, announcements. Any announcements from the council?
I do.
Alderman, Clerk Tamer.
Just wanted to say that packets can be picked up today for the April 4th, starting today for the April 4th, 2023 consolidated election packets. Actually, they're available as of Friday, and petitions can start being circulated tomorrow, the 20th. Filing will be taking place Monday, December 12 through Monday, December 19, Administration Office, second floor in City Hall, on the 12th, opening at 8:30 in the morning and closing at 9:00 on the 19th. And there'll be a lottery and so forth. Information is available for that online at elmhurst.org. You can come to the city clerk's office or shoot us out an email and we'll send you the packet that way as well.
Thank you. Clerk Tamer, any other announcements? Move on to item six, the consent agenda. Is there any, Alderman, that has any item on the consent agenda they would like to remove either to vote against or for further discussion? There being none, Clerk Tamer, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Give me one second. 6.1 minutes of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council on September 6, 2022. 6.2 accounts payable, September 19, 2022, totaling $2,936,946.88. 6.3 reappointment of William Shanklin, Carol Jacobson, Marcia Baker to the Elmhurst Library Board of Trustees. 6.4 report Elmhurst Commission on Youth Speak and Engagement Contract. 6.5 report request to deaccession artifact from the Elmhurst History Museum Collection. 6.6 report Elmhurst University Parade and Homecoming 2022. 6.7 report Case 22 ZBA 09, front and corner side yard variations at 456 East Crescent. 6.8 report endpoint detection and response. 6.9 report Microsoft 365. 6.10 report electrical installation of license plate reader. 6.11 report one Toyota Highlander LEAWD CMM 8.1. 6.12, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a grant of temporary construction easement agreement buying between Nicholas G. Dillis as trustee of trust agreement dated October 25, 2006, and designated as trust number 06E51 in the city of Elmhurst, Illinois. 6.13, an ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to the agreement for residential refuse and recycling services with Allied Waste Services of North America LLC, DBA Republic Services of Melrose Park. 6.14, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a professional design engineering service agreement buying between Clark Deeds Inc. and the city of Elmhurst for the 2023 storm sewer lining project. 6.15, a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional engineering services agreement with Baxter and Woodman, Inc. for the storm sewer field verification project. 6.16, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a professional construction engineering services agreement buying between Clark Deeds, Inc. and the city of Elmhurst for the McKinley Storm Station Rehabilitation Project. 6.17, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract for the McKinley Storm Station Rehabilitation Project. 6.18, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a professional design engineering services agreement between the city of Elmhurst, Illinois and Baxter and Woodman, Inc. for the Atrium Force Main Replacement Project. And 6.19, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of the First Amendment to the contract for biosalads removal and land application services with Stewart Spreading, Inc.
Thank you, ma'am. A motion to put the consent agenda before the council for approval. Alderman Hanquist moves to approve. Second Alderman, Mulliner. Role call, Clerk Tamer.
Veremus.
Aye.
Stoyter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Hill.
Aye.
Palomsky.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Cahill.
Aye.
Nudera.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Bastido.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays, zero absent.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. The consent agenda has been approved. Item seven, reports recommendations of appointed and elect officials, 7.1, Mayor Levin. We've had several very successful events. Rock the Block last week was the first time we've had sort of our outdoor dining conjoined with our Rock the Block. And from the reports I got from the restaurants, they were very pleased with that. And I think the public showed great support and good to be back at Rock the Block. Beer Fest was last Saturday, very successful. And I congratulate the museum foundation for that, as well as Spring Road Days was held on Saturday. That is my report. City manager, are you doing your report from over there?
No, I'm telling you.
All right. Item 7.2, city manager, Grabowski.
Thank you, mayor. Tonight, the only item I have is the overview of the capital expenditure budget. We're bringing it up on the screen for a presentation. You also have a paper copy in front of you, and we'll post this to the meeting first thing tomorrow.
All right.
Get that done.
All right, so we're going right to 7.3, 2022 capital budget?
Yes.
Very good. City manager.
Thank you. So this is essentially what kicks off the city council portion of the budget process. I know we had sent out a memo previously, just alerting you that we're looking at the CEB, but tonight, what I plan to do is present an overview of the CEB and then certainly happy to answer any questions. Mayor, as we've done in the past, particular questions or projects have typically gone to committee for review if you have detailed questions, but of course, we're happy to answer any general questions tonight. You all should have received your binder, your budget binder. In it was the capital expenditure budget along with my introductory letter. I am not going to read through that tonight. I'm just going to do an overview. So with that, we'll get started. Mike, if you can hit the next slide. So the objective of the capital budget is to identify and create a comprehensive plan for long-term major expenditures that are necessary for the development, the maintenance, the planning of the assets for the city. And in Elmhurst, capital expenditures are those that are $25,000 or more that are the acquisition or construction of fixed assets with the intention to hold for a period of 10 years or more. Once we have a list of what those capital expenditures are, we use two different classifications to sort of rank them. One is the expenditure classifications on the left side of this slide and then the priority, which is on the right side of the slide. And if you look at the table, you'll see the next five years purchases all laid out. As I wrote in my cover letter, we did see an increase to the CEB, which in person-wise shouldn't be a surprise to most people, but we did have particular projects that were increased in expenses that we were not anticipating. Couple of public works projects that we came in either came in overbid or we anticipate are going to increase significantly and then added to that as well. The next slide is a breakdown of the expenditures. You can see between the municipal utility fund, which is the light blue portion of that pie, the upper-left corner, and the general fund expenditures make up a majority of the capital budget. Also in there are vehicles, stormwater projects, TIF projects. And then the general fund is broken out on the right side, public safety, street maintenance, museum, other smaller department or department needs, I should say. The next slide shows a revenue and funding sources. You'll see that the numbers do tie out together, but that's because a lot of the projects that we have that are further out in the CEB, not necessarily next year's projects, but in years to come, don't have a defined funding source. And so we put those on the radar for the council and then put on there that they propose that they'd be funded by either GEO bonds or IEPa loans. And then, of course, we need to recognize the funding source to repay those as we go through this. The areas that I will get into in a little bit include street and sidewalk program, the municipal utility fund, which I mentioned, our stormwater projects, our municipal buildings, some major equipment, and then other facility projects, as I kind of alluded to with the pie diagram. And so going through the street and sidewalk programs, this has always been kind of a rubber band for us as years go through and we realize what funding we have and we don't have as far as street resurfacing. A lot of it depends, of course, on the price of product and labor as we go through the projects. And so we try to schedule it out, as you see in the first row, to put just under $4 million each year into street resurfacing. That's to keep up with the number of miles that we have and so that we get them in a good rotation so that they are kept in good condition. Under that is the concrete resurfacing. Number of years ago, we moved to a process where instead of rebuilding a concrete road, we've milled it down a bit, patched it, and then put a layer of asphalt on top of it. And so we proposed to continue that through this budget, through this capital budget. Our asphalt, concrete, and patching is a regular item that we use each year for exactly that, just patching those areas to get them through until we can repave the roads. Street sealing is crack filling or sealing or coming back a year or two after a new street to put our recomite treatment on there. The item after that, sidewalk cost share program, that's been a constant in the budget as we go through to look for, that's for new sidewalks where neighbors' blocks want to share in that cost. We have a small project going on this year along Butterfield where the neighbors are sharing in on the cost of that. The second-to-last item is the sidewalk slabjacking, and that's a process where we level out sidewalks that we can due to tree roots or sinking in some cases. And then we have a miscellaneous new sidewalk where we need to put in gaps, fill in gaps, or reconstruct areas that are trip hazards. Turning the page to our street program, we have a number that are laid out into the future. 2023 will be a road construction project on Brush Hill from Euclid to Commonwealth. I believe that is also going to involve some new concrete shoulders to better tuck in the asphalt and really keep that in better condition as we've been doing with other asphalt road projects. Beyond that, in 2024, we have Park Avenue Bridge Deck replacement. If you recall, this year, we did the first street bridge deck project that went very well. Next year, we do the Park Avenue deck. After that, in '25, we have the Butterfield and York intersection work, and that is significantly state grant-funded, that 1.9 million. The Villa Avenue Street Resurfacing is a project we're doing jointly with Villa Park. I believe it was supposed to happen this year, but it got pushed back a year. And then we anticipate by the time we need the funding for it because Villa Park is taking the lead on that project and we'll pay them once the project's done. We anticipate that in 2025. And then you see Northwest Elmhurst roadway reconstruction and Cayuga Avenue in the list as well. And those are subject to change. We apply for grants for many of those, and we're very successful in getting grants for many of those. And some of those are tied into dates because of that. Other ones are a little more flexible in how we can move back and forth. So going to the next slide is bike and pedestrian program. We have the Route 83 Bike and Pedestrian Bridge. That is a target construction date of 2025. We have partial grant funding for that right now. We intend to apply for additional funding for significantly more dollars to fund that project. That is in preliminary design right now. And then on the right side of that, bike and ped plan improvements. We had the update to the plan done last year. We've approved a contract for engineering to start looking at those projects so that we can keep moving. And we anticipate getting some of those projects in the queue in 2024 by the time engineering is ready to go and the council has made decisions on what are the priorities. Turning the page, the municipal utility fund. This is our water and sewer facilities. As everybody here knows, we've invested quite a bit of money over the last few years in both of those. This year, we deferred our water main program due to the aggregate strike that happened, not knowing if we would have the materials that we needed, the increase in materials, pipe, and labor. We've decided to push that to 2023 and do a larger project in 2023. Like the roadways, we try to replace a certain amount of water main per year. The master plan recommends 2.1 miles. A lot of that depends on the costs of what we can do and the rates that we receive for that. And so our current rate is 1.8 miles per year. We always strive to get back to that 2.1 to keep that on a 90-year rotation. Right now, we're on, I think, approximately a 100-year rotation. And then we have a pump station slated for 2025, which should be funded with a loan from the IEPa. That's a very low-interest loan. On the sewer maintenance side, we continue to keep up with repairs and lining, our cleaning program as well. We found that to be very beneficial to prevent any blockages and backups. We have a big project that the council just approved as part of the consent agenda, the Atrium Force Main design. So that's constructed in 2023. And then sewer cost share program that we have with residents and lift station repairs are other highlights for that. On the wastewater treatment plant side, we have bundle five. Unfortunately, that came in much higher than what we anticipated, and that is moving towards our requirement that the IEPa has put into place for treating phosphorus by 2030. Bundle five was anticipated to cost 15 million. It's now budgeted at 25 million. And bundle six, which is the phosphorus project, is estimated at 25 million. That would bring in all the necessary equipment to treat for phosphorus, and both of those are funded by low-interest IEPa loans. The next slide gives you an idea of the projects that we've been moving through over the years, bundle zero through five and even into bundle six, which is certainly the most significant one. But it gives you an idea overall of what we're doing at the treatment plant. And I know that Paul Burris is happy to take anybody on a tour that hasn't been there yet to show you exactly what we're doing down there. And that goes for the public, not just the elected officials. Any public want to get a tour down there, certainly they can reach out to us and we're happy to take them there. The next slide gets into our stormwater projects. We still have some projects that are in the queue. And so we are looking at particularly storm station improvements. And these are the pump stations that take the water over the levee to make sure that it doesn't back up east into the seventh ward and fifth ward areas. And those pumps have met their end of life. As we go through the chart, you see that. So we worked on one this year. We're in the midst of working on another, and then we have a couple more to go. Along with that, we have some projects that were ranked by the Public Works Committee and approved by city council. And so we have those queued up later into the CEB. The biggest one that's out there is Spring and Agleston right now, and that's programmed right now in 2026. We are always looking for grant funds to maybe move that up in the queue and get the design done. And hopefully, we can get that done sooner than what's shown on this chart. The next slide shows public safety buildings. We've talked about this for a number of years. We started talking about the police station and their space needs. And then when the pandemic hit, of course, we pulled that back. And we'd like to start that conversation again with the Public Affairs and Safety Committee to location, scope of work, those type of things, so that we can talk more about the space needs for the police department. Then on the other side is Fire Station 1. Again, we've talked about this for a while as well. More to get it on the radar than anything. Station 1 functions fine, but just so the council knows that at some point, we do need to improve that station, maybe relocate that station. Really, that's how we started talking about the project, was that we thought we had an opportunity to relocate Station 1. That didn't pan out with some state property, but it's something that's into the future that we should think about. The next slide shows Public Works Garage. And at 23 years old, it's been needing some work. It needed some roof repairs last year, some painting. We have some other projects in the queue for that, including some lift replacements for the vehicle work, the fuel island replacement, and then some smaller stuff, switchgear, building automation, those type of things. And then eventually, if we get to a Phase 3 improvement, that would be on the south end of the building where we relocate the cul-de-sac, do some open yard storage, possibly some non-heated storage, stormwater detention, things that are necessary. There's a note on this slide that in our partnership with the Park District, they contribute to 25% of all the improvements that we make down there. Other facility projects that are on our radar include some necessary improvements to keep our buildings functional and comply with ADA requirements. And one of those is City Hall. The elevator here needs a lot of work. We've had occasions where it's been stuck, and so we need to fix that to some degree. We need to re-carpet because we're seeing some gaps in the carpet wrinkle, and we don't want trip hazards. And then also construct a general neutral bathroom and a wellness room within the building. Moving over to the fire training tower, that needs some attention with the roof and tuck pointing so that it doesn't fall into further disrepair. We are looking at different alternatives for the burn area. There's really two sections to that facility. There's classroom area, and then there's the burn area. And so with Chief Anishevitz, we're looking at what possibilities are out there as far as cheaper alternatives to reconstruct that burn room area. And then on the, for the museum, we have a number of grant-funded improvements that are in the works, but we recently received some news that the chimneys need some significant tuck pointing. They have been pulling away from the building. We think that might be because of the strong winds that we had a year or two ago. And with the age of the facility, we're looking into that with Public Works to see what exactly needs to be done, what can be done, what has to be done. But you'll see some work done there sooner than later. The next page gets into our tax increment finance districts. When we have big capital projects in there, we do include them. One of the largest, of course, is the metro station, which we have significant grant funds for, but we always anticipated using TIF funds for that. You see that the price now, the estimate, because of inflation and soil issues and delays from getting our IDOT approvals, the price has gone up significantly. We continue to work on that design, and we also continue to work towards additional grant funds. We've had very positive conversations with CMAP, and I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself. I think that might be the next slide. But we've had significant and positive conversations with CMAP, who control the CMAC grant dollars. And then we've also had positive conversations with the ICC, and they control the grade crossing protection fund, which is the money that we get for the pedestrian and tunnel. And we've told them the issues that we're having, and they suggested that we petition for additional grant funds for that project. So there's a number of projects that we anticipate throughout all four TIFs, as you can see, excuse me, all three TIFs. The bottom corner, bottom right corner, is the facade renovation for all the TIF districts that we include each year. Turning the page, as I started to go into and I think concluded, the metro station project continues moving forward. And as you see, we do have significant grant funds waiting for us, and so we anticipate continuing that project. I believe that concludes my presentation, mayor. I'm happy to answer, like I said, general questions. Oh, I'm sorry. Mike, next slide. It does not conclude my presentation yet. This is just a little bit about the debt load that we have and what we anticipate in the future. Coming up, we have just under $80 million in GEO bonds outstanding. The CEB includes additional projects to be funded, but again, that's into the future, and we always look for alternative revenues for those. The municipal utility fund is consistently using the low-interest IEPa loans, and that is paid by the users through our water and sewer fees. And then we've had the discussions already with the stormwater fee that there is a need to talk about additional funding for repayment of bonds into the future as we continue to move forward. Next slide, Mike? And so that brings us to next steps in the budget process. We take this CEB, and as I said in the beginning, particular projects that you may want to discuss, most of it is appropriate at Public Works Committee. There are a few that would go elsewhere. We take this CEB, though, and we roll it into the operating, the two-year operating budget that we're putting together now. Finance Committee will discuss the revenues and review all those. The department directors and I are putting together that operating budget as it is right now. And once the expenditures and revenues are put together, we'll start the committee, the whole budget review process, which is typically the beginning of November. And so that's where we are, mayor. That concludes my presentation.
All right. We're not going to go into detail tonight on the specific budget items because most of those, if not all of them, are going to be run through a committee where they will be more fully vetted, but it doesn't mean that we won't be back here talking about them again. But does anyone have any questions about the process that's been laid out and what's been shown today? All right. Thank you. City manager. We'll move on to item eight, ordinances, 8.1. Clerk Tamer, if you would read the ordinance.
An ordinance waiving
An ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the purchase of one Toyota Highlander LEAWD and the disposal of one 2015 Toyota Highlander for the city of Elmhurst Police Department. See item 6.12.
May I have a motion to put 8.1 before the council? Alderman Brennan, Second Alderman Hanquist. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to defer to Vice Chair Hanquist on this one.
Alderman Hanquist.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is the replacement of a police vehicle that was hit and destroyed, or totaled is the word I'm looking for. So we are working with the insurance company to get that replaced, but in the meantime, as we're doing with all of our vehicles because of the supply shortages in cars and trucks, et cetera, we want to move this forward quickly so we can get the replacement vehicle ordered while we work through the financials. So that's why it's here.
Thank you, Alderman Hanquist. Any questions or further discussion? All right. Clerk Tamer?
Veremos?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palomsky?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill?
Aye.
Udera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
14 ayes, 0 nays.
14 ayes, 0 nays. Item 8.1 passes. Onto Item 9, other business. Is there any other business to be brought before the council? May I have a motion to adjourn? Alderman Hanquist, Second Alderman Brennan, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Or adjourned? Thank you.